Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council this fourth day of July. Let's call our meeting to order. We'll put our heads for a moment of reflection. Please remember the family of Bob McTavish, former Warden from 1992 to 1993. He passed away this past week. I'll now read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Honanasa Bay, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honour and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous, Matias, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and a continued stewardship of the land in which we live in. If you have a cuneary interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. Confirmation of the agenda. Tyler has a couple additions.
Thank you. So just one addition through the Warden is to the delegation piece, item 7.2 on item 8.2.3, which is the application plan subdivision submitted by 1803018, Ontario Inc., PE 22-01, Caroline Baker, Baker Planning Group.
Okay, thank you. And so we have a motion that the July 4, 2024 agenda be approved as amended. Second by Officer Kastenberg. All in favour? Carried. Okay, our consent items. I'll let Tyler speak to that.
Do I do the minutes first?
Oh, maybe.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, minutes of that's... Do you want to do this? Okay, count to minutes. Is there any questions on the minutes that we had? It's ripping off this morning, Tyler. Okay, so the council approves the June 20th, 2024 council minutes. Moved by councillor Agherson, second by councillor Orr. All in favour? Carried. And then we all have Tyler talk about the consent agenda items.
Perfect. So through the Warden, before council is a new report just on the consent agenda items. Listing in this report, you'll see a table that breaks down general correspondence, which we didn't have any minutes, as well as previous action on municipal resolutions, and then municipal resolutions that have not had any action on it. If council members would like to pull any items, we would do that. If not, we would receive their report for information.
Okay, any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? No? Okay, then we have a motion that council receives a consent agenda item report, June 2024, for information. Moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Agherson. All in favour? Carried. Okay, and now we're down to public meetings, hearings, and delegations. We do have a public meeting this morning, so regular council recess for the purpose of holding a planning public meeting at approximately 9:03 a.m. Moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Trankowski. Favour? Carried. Okay, I would like to call our public meeting to order. If you have a cuneary interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting moves along. First, we have the minutes... Oh, sorry. The agenda be approved, that the planning public meeting July 4, 2024 agenda be approved. Moved by councillor McKenzie, second by deputy Warden Kellam. All in favour? Carried. We have the minutes from our last public meeting of June 20th. Is there any questions on any of those minutes? If not, then we have a motion that council approves the minutes for the June 20, 2024 planning public meeting. Moved by councillor Orr, second by councillor McDermott. Carried. And then we do our report. We have Perth County Official Plan Amendment number 229 for the Giesberg property. I believe we have John with us. Welcome, John. Where's yours?
Thank you, Warden and council. Before you today is official plan amendment number 229. It's located at 2190 Perth Line 163 in the township of Perth South. That's at the red star there. Next slide, please. The property owner currently runs a grain elevator operation in conjunction with their farming operation on their property. The owners are seeking an official plan amendment to facilitate the growth and expansion of that existing grain elevator operation as an agricultural-related commercial use. The official plan amendment is being sought to exempt this grain elevator operation from the Perth County Official Plan requirement of MDS-1 calculations and setbacks. So the official plan, section 5.5.10 subsection E, is there to apply MDS-1 calculations and setbacks when an agriculture-related use is proposed through lock creation. So this official plan amendment is being sought again to establish a site-specific agriculture designation to permit the exemption of this grain elevator operation from applying these requirements of MDS-1. Property currently has two dwellings, a grain elevator operation, two active chicken barns, and accessory buildings. Next slide, please. So the subject lands are designated agriculture and natural resource environments in the Perth County Official Plan. The lands designated natural environment remain unchanged through this application. Next slide, please. So the provincial guidance on applying MDS-1 setbacks and calculations agriculture-related uses like this one is outlined in the OMAFRA documents, publication 853, and that's the MDS document. Guideline 35 of this document outlines that MDS-1 setbacks from existing livestock facilities will generally not be needed for land use planning applications which propose agricultural-related uses like this one. Guideline 35 does acknowledge, however, that some proposed agriculture-related uses may exhibit characteristics that could lead to potential conflicts with surrounding livestock facilities. The grain elevator operation, however, is not anticipated to cause these types of conflicts. As well additionally, the draft OP, the Perth County Draft OP exempts these agriculture-related uses from MDS-1 in the future. Next slide, please. The subject property is zoned agriculture and natural resource environments. The occupants have also submitted a zoning bylaw amendment for the proposal that will remove a portion of the agricultural designation, or sorry, agricultural zone, and replace it with an agricultural commercial manufacturing, ACM zone. Next slide, please. So public notice was provided to neighboring owners on June 13th, and no comments have been received to date. Next slide, please. And we currently have a recommendation, as seen on the screen, for approval when I can take any questions.
Okay, thanks, John. I believe we have with us this morning in person Caroline Baker. She's for the agent, agent for the application. So welcome, Caroline. It's great to see you.
Thank you. Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here in person. Caroline Baker, Baker Planning Group. Certainly, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but Mr. Weiss was very thorough in his presentation and detail, so I just wanted to add a few little extra pieces of information. If you don't mind just going through the slides, if you just slide three or four. Perfect. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of additional context of the work the owners are doing on the site and the planning applications they filed. So certainly, we're here this morning for an official plan amendment. This is solely related to the requirement for MDS, the County of Perth official plan for the proposed grain elevator expansion. There are other pieces they're working on. Mr. Weiss mentioned there's implementing zone change to the ACM zone, which is required for these agricultural-related uses in the township bylaw. They are also, I'm sure you're aware, they have an additional application. They're proposing to add some land to the adjacent school, Mapleview School. That's at the south end of their site. The school currently uses some of their land for a portion of the playground. So there's an additional consent application to allow the school to own the land they use for the playground. So that was the second component of their application. Next slide. That leads what we just went through. Next slide. So this is the overall site design that's proposed for the grain elevators. They're proposing overall to remove one elevator and over time add five new elevators. They're proposing in and out entrances from Perth Road 163 to ensure safe operation of vehicles that are coming for delivery or pickup, as well as a small office area with parking spaces for employees on the site. Next slide. This is the consent application related to the school, just for information in terms of the various components on the property. Next slide. And as mentioned by Mr. Weiss, both the draft official plan framework in the county, as well as provincial policy statement and OMAFRA, have clear direction that where there's low human habitation, that MDS calculations are not required for agriculture-related uses, given the nature of their operation and the sensitivity. And that's the end of my presentation. I just want to note that we concur with planning staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one. Okay, are there any questions from members of council? Officer Orr.
Caroline, can you just clarify the one slide? I think it's very kind that the Giesbergs have donated the land to the school, so I just... That is happening.
So the, through the Warden, the consent application has received approval and working through the conditions and associated zone change to come back to township council.
Right, so they are donating a piece of land.
I can clarify through the owners the exact terms of the arrangement, but the, yes, the land is going to the school.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, did he comment? I think we've already had a look at that proposal with the church, or the school church.
Through the Warden, yes.
Yeah.
Does the owners wish to make any comments?
Not sure what to really say, but otherwise, yeah, we'd just like to get this done if we could.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no more questions from council, then we will rise from the public meeting. Okay, so planning public meeting be adjourned at 9:13 a.m. Moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Orr. All in favour? Carried. And then that we need a motion that we go back into regular council, so that regular council reconvene at approximately 9:13 a.m. Moved by councillor Trankowski, second by councillor Orr. All in favour? Carried. Okay, now we're moving to our delegation, and we have Caroline with us this morning. You could have stayed up there.
My apologies, I should have stayed up.
That's all right. Welcome back.
I thought Mr. Bannon was going next, so I...
The floor is yours.
Good morning again. The application before you this morning is the draft plan of subdivision for Mr. Jeff Bateman's land in Milverton. Certainly, he's here this morning along with Cameron Moffett from MTE. Should there be any engineering questions? I'm sure this is a familiar application to county council. Certainly, there was an official plan amendment through 2023 and 2024 to bring these lands into the Milverton urban settlement area. That has been approved, and the lands are now considered settlement area. Following that approval, the next stages of this application was to bring forward the draft plan of subdivision to create the lots, blocks, servicing, and roads, and an implementing zone change to select the appropriate zones based on the proposed uses. Certainly, this is an overview of the project team. There was civil engineering, transportation engineering, natural environment, and archaeological. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the site for reference. It's on the south end of the community, located between the existing recreational area and the percon industrial development to the south. So it's sort of the intervening land between the two. And this is sort of very important, as we've talked about in the past, in terms of how this subdivision has been laid out for the uses between residential, commercial, and industrial. Next slide, please. Up on the screen is the proposed draft plan of subdivision, certainly just color-coded to draw attention to the particular land uses and blocks and lots that are proposed to be approved. What you'll see in yellow are the proposed residential uses. It would provide 72 dwelling units between singles, semi-detached, and street townhouses. In the sort of faded rose pink color, those are two small commercial blocks, so those would be local-serving commercial uses for the community. The two purple blocks would be light industrials. Certainly, through the applications, there's a proposal to ensure that any industrial use would need to meet noise requirements for surrounding residential. So when an identified industrial user comes forward, certainly the business is not known at this time, they would need to demonstrate that their operation, whether it's noise, odor, or dust, meets the ministry's requirements for residential. You'll see the stormwater management pond is in blue, serving this development, as well as a large wooded area. So this is a protected woodlot with the associated buffers. The environmental study has been reviewed and accepted by both the county and the Conservation Authority in terms of protection of natural environment. There's a new street network that connects to Road 131. Based on the traffic study, that likely will be the primary entrance and exit from this development. There is, of course, a connection to the north, Street 3A, to provide community circulation and movement of both pedestrians and vehicles. Next slide. As referenced, there is an implementing zone change that went to the township, and this is to provide the appropriate residential, commercial, and industrial zones. There were some site-specific provisions related to lot coverage and setbacks that are generally in compliance or alignment with more recent new developments in the county that we've seen in surrounding communities. The lots have also been sized to accommodate secondary suites. As I'm sure you're aware, the province would allow secondary suites in all of the proposed residential lots. So they are permitted in singles, semis, and street townhouses. You can have one within the existing building and one to the rear garden suite, or many different names, accessory unit that could go in the rear, and the lots have the width to provide the additional parking to meet that need. Next slide. As mentioned, there was a traffic study, generally that the development was deemed to comply with the traffic movements. There was a recommendation for a left turn lane largely resulting from background traffic, meaning existing traffic from the community. Next slide. This is the grading and servicing plan that was prepared by MTE, has been reviewed by VM Ros on behalf of the township, and will, of course, through detailed design, should the subdivision be approved, MTE will continue to work with the township on the detailed design of stormwater, grading, and servicing. Next slide. We probably did cover and talked about the noise study through the official plan amendment. Certainly, through those discussions, a noise study was prepared that complies with the ministry, and in addition, it's our understanding that the noise source, being the Ron and Gun Club, has an exemption for noise in their location. Next slide. So in summary, through our planning justification report, it was concluded that the application is consistent with provincial policy, conforms to the official plan, and provides the land use needs in the community and the transition of land uses for land use compatibility, and supports, of course, the protection of natural environment and the safe and efficient movement of people and cars. That's the end. I left that up on the screen at the end, just in case there's any specific questions about the layout or the proposed uses. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Caroline. Any questions? Okay, then we have a motion that council receives a delegation, item 8.2.3, application for plan of subdivision submitted by 1803018, Ontario Inc., PE 22-01, Caroline Baker, Baker Planning Group for information. Moved by councillor Agherson, second by councillor Kastenberg. All in favour? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Okay, moving on in our agenda, we're doing staff reports. The first staff report is under the CAO, and it's a human resource policy update, and we have Krista with us this morning.
Good morning, and welcome.
Thanks. Here we go. All right. Good morning, Warden, and members of county council. The report before you outlines changes made to HR policies in section one of the HR policy and procedure manual. These housekeeping, or these changes are housekeeping in nature, and there are no financial implications in the county. HR is undertaking an exercise of reviewing all policies pertaining to employees, so health and safety and HR, and we're beginning with section one of the human resources policies. These policies pertain to staffing, recruitment, and compensation. Most required minor changes to meet legislation, mere current processes, and include inclusive language. All policies are also transferred onto the new accessible template, which complies with Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act. We ask county council to approve these updates as presented before you today, and I welcome any questions that you have.
Okay, thanks, Krista. Questions of the report? Officer Kastenberg?
Just a strange technical question, but I had taken note, and maybe it's because I'm getting older, that the new template for these policies, the font was pretty small. And I'm just curious about whether there's an accessibility question around font size of these documents.
Okay. So through the, through the Warden, for accessibility, the font has to be about 12 and up. With this, I think because it was the attachment into the agenda, it might appear actually smaller than what it, what it is and what it will be provided upon file completion as a PDF.
Okay, anyone else? I have one question on page 45. It's the HR 1-2. It has to do with organizational chart. Under CAO, it says the CAO approves the organizational chart. Shouldn't that be council as well as council? Am I reading it wrong here, or? Go ahead.
So through the Warden, that's not a change made, that it was an existing authority in the current policies of council wants to change that. They'd have to amend it.
Well, I realize that, but I, I believe that organizational chart should be approved by council, not... Otherwise, yeah, that's just my... I don't know. Is anybody else? Comment? Councillor McDermott?
It probably would be better if it did come back to council.
Through the Warden, so typically, any type of structural changes, if the position comes forward, would be presented to council if there were changes to the positions, but the org chart is actually just updating internally and in-house for the rest of the staff, and we do that twice a year, or more if there's changes in positions that are considered, like through in-year approvals, so.
Still would be nice for council to see it, though.
You can bring back the org chart at our semi-annual reports and HR updates.
Okay. Right, as long as it comes back for council to see as well. Okay. Anyone else? If not, then we have a motion that council receives a Human Resource Policy Update Report, section one, and that council approves Human Resource Policies Update, section one. Moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Agherson. All in favour? Carried. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving to planning, and the first item is the Perth County Official Plan Amendment, OPA 229, the Giesberg application, and we have John coming back. Welcome again, John, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden and council. No further comments at this time, but again, can answer questions.
Okay, any questions of John? If not, oh, sorry, councillor Kastenberg?
Just want to clarify one thing, just curiosity. This school, it is adjacent. I assume that it is sort of, it doesn't have any impact on this MDS calculation because it's pre-existing? Is that the way we look at this, or is it outside the typical MDS thing?
Yeah, so through, through the Warden here, the MDS that we are exempting is MDS-1 for the agriculture-related use. Doesn't actually, that MDS-1 exemption doesn't have any impact on the school. For example, MDS-1 considerations are typically when a new farmhouse is put in. So what we're saying here is the agriculture-related use is far less sensitive than, say, a dwelling. And that agriculture-related use shouldn't be subject to the same standards as those sensitive land uses itself, so we are exempting them from MDS-1 and not MDS-2 or anything like that.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment, number 229, Giesberg Report, and that council approves the official plan amendment, number 229, to the County of Perth Official Plan submitted by Caroline Baker on behalf of Ron and Sharon Giesberg, affecting lands legally described as Lot 5, Concession West, Mitchell Road, Blanchard, in the Township of Perth South, 2190 Perth Road 163. Moved by councillor Agherson, second by councillor Orr. All in favour? Okay. And our next item is application for plan condominium extension, and that's John. Go ahead, please.
Thank you through the Warden, and thank you to council as well. So before you today is an application for condominium extension, a plan of condo extension, that is. The owners are Candy Rhodes, and the location is 230, 230 Ontario Road in Mitchell. So if you, those are who are familiar with the Mitchell area, this property is just south of the Tim Hortons, located on the west, or the eastern side of Mitchell, that is. Next slide, please. So just to give an overview on what was approved in 2019, the draft plan condominium encompasses about 1.36 hectares, and proposed, or draft-approved, seven buildings with a total of 28 townhouse units, as well as common element blocks. Development is located to the north of the natural hazards to the south, and is outside of their parameters. Next slide, please. So this slide is just to give a timeline, kind of update to council, just to go over that. So on May 16, 2019, the draft plan condominium, Candy Rhodes submitted, was approved, and Perth County granted that approval. The draft plan approval was for five years, and if the conditions of the draft plan were not fulfilled in that time, the draft plan would last. If the draft plan laxes, the proponents would have to resubmit a brand-new plan of subdivision, plan of condominium, or a brand-new application altogether. March 15, 2024, the proponents realized that their five years was coming up, so they have applied for a one-year extension as of March 15, 2024. On May 2, planning staff were successful in requesting an amendment to the Perth County's delegated approval bylaw. That happened here at county council. This amendment gives the manager of planning delegated approval authority to extend a draft plan like this one for a one-time occurrence of up to three months. And then on May 8, the manager of planning approved this three-month extension for the subject applications, as the timeframe in order to get this in front of council could not have been met based on the submission, and there was some juggling of council meetings as well. So it was just to allow them three additional months to properly assess the application and, and get their ducks in a row. Fast forwarding to today, it's July 4. County council will decide for or against the extension, and if approved, the extension will grant the owners one year, which would last on July 4, 2025. Should also be noted that on the July 2, the Perth council passed a resolution recommending that county council approve the one-year extension request. Next slide, please. So it's a little dark, police for that, but this is an image of the site. Some work continues on, on the site, but we're going to go into of why the site seems so bare. The Condominium Act actually does not permit a developer from starting construction on townhouses until the condominium is registered. Since the condominium is not registered yet, they are not permitted to start work on the townhouse buildings. This is why the development has not occurred on those buildings. Also should be noted that condition 10 of the draft-approved Also should be noted that Condition 10 of the draft-approved draft plan, and in accordance with the Condo Act, the owner has the option to post security for incomplete common elements instead of having all the common elements completed at the time of registration. So if that one-year extension is granted, that would be by 4th, 2025. The applicants have advised that common element items such as bioswales, road construction, hydrotransformers are the common elements that are not anticipated to be completed at the, at the time of the condominium is registered, July 4th, 2025. And those reasons are to do with timing of construction, not wanting to ruin the bioswales prior to the construction of the building lots themselves. The applicants have also advised that they will be seeking to follow this process of posting securities for the incomplete common element items that are not anticipated to be completed by July 4th, 2025. So because of this, staff are of the opinion that a one-year extension is enough time to clear the remaining conditions. It also should be noted that upon registration of the condominium agreement, there's, applicants are currently going through a site plan amendment to amend the date that all development should be concluded on the site, and that date will be revised to, say, two years from time of condo registration. So for, for some context, the development on the site, if, if the extension is granted, should be finalized within three years. Can you take any questions?
Okay, thank you. Questions? Counselor McDermott?
Did you say that they can only once get a three-month extension? Like you can only get that once per year project?
So through the warden, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, we have a motion that council receives the application for plan condominium extension submitted by KND Rhodes Construction Limited, WP 19-02 Report, and that council approves the application for the extension to the plan of condominium, WP 19-02, for lands described as part of parks lot 81 and 82, registration plan 341, 230 Ontario Street, Mitchell Ward, parts 1 and 2, 44R-6043, in the municipality of West Perth. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Trunkowski. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Now, we're going to move to our next one, and that's the application for plan subdivision submitted by 1803018Ontario, Inc., and I believe Jeff is with us this morning to do that. Good morning, Jeff, and welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So the subject land is located on the west side of Perth Road 131 between Wilford Street and Line 61 in the south entrance of Temperance Street. County of Perth approved official plan amendment 2015 in January of 2024, and also approved the Milverton Official Plan Amendment 12 to the Milverton Ward Official Plan on April 4th of 2024. Both appeal periods have lapsed, so they are in effect. Zoning by law amendment was approved on May 22nd of 2024 by Perth East Council. So this application is a plan subdivision application to develop the property with 72 residential dwelling units, which include 27 single-detached dwellings, 28 semi-detached dwellings, and 17 street townhouses. It includes two commercial blocks, two industrial commercial blocks with five new streets, and one pedestrian walkway. Next slide, please. Subject lands are located within the settlement area. It's defined in the provincial policy statement. They're designated as residential area, residential with special site-specific provisions to prevent developmental alterations for the woodlot area to the south, highway, commercial, and industrial in the Milverton Official Plan. Proposed development provides for housing option that meets the needs of current and future residents in the area, and the residential density provides a density of 13.6 units per hectare for the single-detached dwellings, 26.9 units per hectare for the semi-detached dwellings, and 34.5 units per hectare for the townhouse dwellings. Next slide, please. Proposed development provides a connection to the existing residential development to the north. The draft plan subdivision is located within the serviced urban area, and servicing will be addressed through the subdivision agreement that is required as a condition of draft approval. Subject lands are located in close proximity to the recreational amenities, including the Baseball Diamond and the Community Center, which are both nearby. Developer will be expected to provide a cash-in-lieu of parkland dedication for the subject lands as a condition of draft approval, and that's been included in the staff recommendation. Development includes a mix of residential housing types that are located to the north of the subject lands to ensure compatibility with existing residential area and to separate the proposed uses from the Milverton and District Rod and Gun Club to the south of the subject lands. Submitted traffic brief has identified that the development can be serviced from Perth Road 131 and the extension of Temperance. Industrial uses are appropriately separated from the commercial and residential uses as they are located on the opposite side of the Stormwater Management Block, and the lots are appropriately sized to accommodate for those industrial developments. Next slide, please. The zoning that is in place has included reduced yard requirements, increased lot coverage provisions that are intended to allow for a more compact development that meets the dense minimum density targets in the county official plan. The residential development will be required to meet all other zoning provisions, including landscaped open space and parking. APK has recognized that the highway, commercial, and industrial zones permit a wide variety of potential uses, which could vary greatly in impacting compatibility, and they have included zoning that includes land use compatibility study that is required before a holding provision can be removed to allow development on those commercial and industrial lands. APK has also submitted functional servicing report and preliminary stormwater management report as part of the subdivision requirements. Consulting engineer for the township of Perth East have reviewed the submission and confirmed that the drainage and servicing can be addressed through the detailed subdivision design. The engineer has no concerns with the ability of APK to service the plan of subdivision. Traffic brief was submitted by Traffic Mobility in October of 2023. The study has identified that left turn lane may be warranted entering the subdivision from Perth Road 131, and again, the subdivision agreement will include provisions to ensure that that left turn lane is provided if needed. So the recommendation that has come from the Perth East Council has been that the draft plan of subdivision submitted by Caroline Baker on behalf of the landowners be approved, subject to the conditions that are listed in the report, and planning staff have no concerns with the draft plan of subdivision, as we feel that the application is consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms with the County of Perth Official Plan and the Milverton Official Plan, and represents good plan, and I'm available to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. Questions or comments? Counselor Smith?
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Again, excellent, excellent proposal for this piece of property with a lot of good mixed uses. Something that I just thought of now during this entire process, with Road 131 possibly adding the turn lane, I know the current speed limit from about approximately Tim Hortons to, going south to 161 is 60 kilometers an hour, so we may have to look at reducing that, in my mind, because of the, well, more traffic, et cetera. That's something perhaps to look at as well in the future.
Through the warden, so that, that's an option that council can look at dealing with those speed limits. It wasn't identified through the traffic study at the time of submission and through the process, but by all means, that's something that can be looked at in the future if we find that the traffic counts or the traffic that is having difficulty trying to get in and out of that subdivision, that's something that could be looked at through an ongoing review.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Counselor McDermott?
Yeah. On page 105, Provision A about the noise, MECP type E warning clause, that's kind of a new thing. Can, can I get a copy of that?
Through the warden, yes, we can definitely provide you with a copy of that. Those provisions are requirements from the government that are going to be addressed through the subdivision conditions in the subdivision agreement, but we can provide you with the copy.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Counselor Kastenberg?
Give me, I see on page 115 a reference to the densities for the different types of units, but overall, in the land use that's proposed for residential development, can you give me a sort of averaged density for that, please?
I don't have the average density for the overall development unless it's included on the plan of subdivision. The density meets the minimum density targets in the County of Perth Official Plan, and the subdivision was submitted in some time ago in 2001, well before we were considering the, the density targets in, for that date for the official plan, but Caroline might have that number available. If not, I might be able to look it up for you.
Caroline's going to come to the table and maybe expand on that a little bit.
Sorry to interrupt. Just to confirm, Counselor the Warden, Kispere, the overall density on the residential component is just under 20.5 units per hectare, taking into consideration the three forms of housing on the property.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Counselor McDermott?
Yeah, in our previous one that we had there, they talked about that you would be allowed to put a secondary unit in. So is this designed that you can put a secondary unit in and enough, like sewage water and that kind of stuff?
Whoever wants to answer?
Through the warden, I'll try to answer your question. So the zoning permits for those secondary dwelling units, I don't think the detailed design of the individual residential dwellings has been completed at this point, but they can be designed to accommodate that second unit.
Maybe I could just add through the warden that my understanding in various development projects, working with BM Ross, who provides the township review and comments, is certainly top of mind for them and the civil engineers submitting the reports, to look at options to ensure that secondary suites can be accommodated within the servicing.
Okay. Other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion that council receives the application for plan of subdivision submitted by 1803018Ontario, Inc., PE 22-01 Report, and that council approves the application for draft plan of subdivision, PE 22-01, 1083018Ontario, Inc., Report for lands described as Lot 6, Concession 3, Milverton Ward, in the Township of Perth East, subject to the following conditions, and there are 17 conditions, and I'm not going to read them, Tyler's not going to make me do that, but they are in the application, they are on the, and on the.
Report.
Pardon?
Report.
They're in the report, so if anyone wishes to read them all, they can read them on our website, so. Okay, so I need to move her into second of that, moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselors Aitchison. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you both. Okay, we're going to move now to corporate services, and the first item is the Forestry Inspector's Report, and Tyler's going to do that.
Perfect. So through the warden, before council is the May 24 Forestry Inspector's Report, prepared by our Forestry Inspector Marvin Smith. Marvin completed five inspections in response to the submission of a notice of intent, or NOI, two inspections in response to the request from a landowner, and one inspection in response to a complaint. One thing to note, just if you're looking at the wonderful mapping by our GIS team, if you're searching any of the information there, use the proper lot number, and then concessions, some of them are GOR 4, so we've had this in the past, so look up GOR 4 in the concession. So it's not concession 4, it's specifically listed as a GOR 4. So if you want to look up the property, that's how you can find the property. That's just for council and public's information. Have you taken any questions, concerns, or inquiries at this time?
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that council receives the May 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report for information. Moved by Counselor Kastenberg, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. All those in favor? Carried. Our next one is our Cultivating Opportunity Grant Program. Tyler?
Excellent. So through the warden, before council is the Cultivating Opportunity Grant Program Policy Update Report. This report is just a review and an update to the Cultivating Opportunity Grant Policy. So similar to what we saw with, with HR, this has now been transferred onto the accessibility template, and as previously mentioned, in the agenda package, it will look a little bit smaller, however, it is a proper size. With this report and this policy update, the, the major change here was the tree planting stream. So this is just the housekeeping portion. In 2023, the tree planting stream portion of this grant was reallocated to the stewardship program. So this is just a refresh. Upon council's approval, we'll be looking at providing the public some information on 2025 grant application process, working with communications on that. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions on the report? Counselor McDermott?
Yeah, I requested we have a talk about this, the continuation of this program, and I think we should look at the fact that last year, we increased our budget by 12.31%. And I realize that 10,000 is only 0.045% of the levy, but I think it would be, and this coming year is going to be a double percent increase again, that we at least look at something to give, so I remember the word goodwill was used, but goodwill for our taxpayers, that we're at least doing something. Seen in the news that there's an awful lot of municipalities are cutting, usually sports things out of their budgets because they can't afford them anymore. So I would, and it seems that our stewardship program is going to get another 25,000, so, and the amount of staff time that's spent on this seems to be excessive. So I would move that we put this program on vacation until we are better able to finance it.
Okay. Counselor Kastenberg?
I just asked for a point of clarification, perhaps, from the clerk. This represents a policy update. There's nothing in this that requires County Council to actually fund this policy. Am I correct in making that assumption?
So through the warden, that is correct. Money's allocated after every budget year, so if there was no money allocated to this project or to this budget, then we wouldn't move ahead with the program. However, keeping in mind that the program, application process happens before the next year's budget, so it'd just be direction to staff whether or not we need to proceed with the application process, building it out, doing all the preliminary work prior to budget approval.
Counselor Aitchison?
Yeah, we can deal with that at budget, that item. I guess my comment's going to be, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, the process of going through the applications and breaking them all down took two-staff much time, if I recall correctly, and I'm thinking either have to streamline the process, do something because we spend as much on staff time and whatnot as we are giving out to some of the organizations. Just my thoughts.
Counselor Kastenberg?
So, so given the clerk's response, that in fact, we would probably open applications before a funding commitment of council for the next budget year is, is actually made, we may be creating undue work for organizations if in fact, the intent of this council is to put this program on hiatus or to eliminate it. And I don't like the idea, I suppose, of putting organizations through undue work for not, if, if that's the choice of this council. So I guess I'm, I'm supporting Counselor McDermott's query here. Not sure it was actually a motion yet, but I, I think that we may want to have a more focused discussion on the question of whether this program survived. My initial response, my initial thoughts on this are that I'm not convinced that this council does need to make these community grants. The organizations largely who are recipients of, of these funds are not-for-profit organizations for the most part and have their own fundraising and, and other efforts, so I'm, I'm a little puzzled by why we do it, and, and in some ways, at times, we create acrimony in the community when organizations that are hopeful don't get those funds. So to me, I guess I would suggest that I think this council does owe it to itself to have a fulsome discussion. I'm not sure now is the moment, because, you know, there's a, a different motion that will come to the floor about this policy, but I, I agree that we should decide. will come to the floor about this policy, but I agree that we should decide whether we want to continue to fund this program.
When did the applications go out?
So through the warden, we start looking at the end of July, August, of preparing the information, and then start receiving applications for September, October, November, as we move forward.
Counselor McDermott?
So that means another August meeting. We could discuss it then.
So through the warden, in order to give staff time to prepare all the information and get it out and ask for the applications, we can certainly bring our report back to council if that's council's wishes for the August meeting. I'm just worried about the timeline, to be completely honest.
So it's better to decide now.
Counselor Kastenberg?
Just as a courtesy, I mean, I think that when we consider a move to discontinue a county-based grant program, we need to give the public the opportunity to offer comment on saying, and so I'm not, I'm not willing today to rush into this. I think that we should send a, you know, sort of a message to the public that we intend to consider more completely whether we intend to discontinue this program's funding. That's why I'm a little nervous about notions that we should make a decision today, but I do think that that decision is warranted. So I'm asking the clerk, how much stress do we put on the system if we say that we pick this off the table at the next county council meeting in August? And, and at that point, after that point, the work that's needed from staff to roll it out, if in fact we decide to fund the program, can be undertaken? Is there a real headache with having the materials come out just a little later this year because county council wanted to undertake a review on this matter?
So through the warden, I think that would be a approach, if we bring our report back in August with respect to viability or council's decision on before we can achieve that for August. I come up with those timelines.
So procedurally, if I may ask the clerk, so procedurally, we could defer or postpone decision on this item until we've had a further report about the viability and, and even sort of an environmental scan, what are other communities in our regional neighborhood doing on this so that we can consider more fulsomely the issue of whether we need this policy, which we may, and whether we intend to fund this policy, which we may or may not.
So through the warden, the resolution in front of council is to approve the policy. So regardless of whether or not we move forward with the program or not, it might be advantageous to take what the resolution is in front of council that received the report and approved the policy today, and then we can bring back a report on viability in August.
So I think I would like to take that approach, if I might, and suggest that I'll move an amendment to the resolution to give staff direction to bring forward a report on the viability of the program, including something of an environmental scan in the regional neighborhood to understand the granting programs of our neighboring municipalities. Sorry, that was a lot. I hope Tyler got that.
Okay, so I'll read the first part. I'll read the addition. So it said, "Council receives a cultivating opportunity grant program policy update report that council approves the updated AL 6.01 cultivating opportunity grant policy reflecting the transfer of the tree planting stream to the stewardship program."
And that council directs staff to prepare a report for August 1st, 2024's regular council meeting on program viability inclusive of an environmental scan. Regional municipalities.
Okay. Counselor McDermott, you're moving now?
I would second that, I would support that.
Okay, so Counsel Kastenberg moves, Counsel McDermott seconds. Questions, Counselor Smith?
Just to comment further to Counsel McDermott's mention of different townships removing sporting grants, et cetera. This grant is cultivating opportunities. We're recommending, we're approving new subdivisions, we want more people to come to our community, to come to the county. We start removing some of these things, and as Counsel McDermott mentioned, 0.004% of our budget for $10,000. Yeah, we'll see some of these people not come to Perth County, they'll move, they'll go to a different county. This is a great grant to help a little bit. I'm totally not in favor of removing this or canceling it. This, we need to, every little bit helps, and I'm sure we don't, we shouldn't have a problem funding this one, so just some comments from my side.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor War.
I do like Counsel Aitchison's suggestion to streamline it though, to make it easier for staff, to keep it simple.
Okay, anything else? Not, all in favor of the motion? Carried. Okay, next, we do financial results and year-end reserve transfers, and we have Cory with us this morning, so welcome Cory, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, War Nagitz and council. The report is before you, and it's related to 2023 year end. The county has accumulated a minor surplus overall of about 56,500. The table within the report identifies the areas of surpluses and deficits for the County of Perth. The report recommends that the deficit be funded by a couple reserves, 52,000 to be funded from the paramedic services WSIV reserve to deal with the deficit in paramedic services, with the remaining deficit of about just $4,400 to be funded from the levy stabilization reserve. The details within the report identified some areas of, within public works. It was highlighted in public works that we did have a surplus in winter maintenance, but we did have a significant deficit in relation to our drainage work. With discussing with the public work staff, we're looking at some ways of funding that drainage work potentially like our capital maintenance with respect to crack ceiling and pavement preservation, that we could potentially fund that from the roads reserve in the future, but that will be come back to council for that purpose. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, questions or comments of the report? Counselor Aitchison?
You may have to look at, when you brought up drainage, that is going to be an issue moving forward, to be honest. Either have their reserve or set money aside, it may not be that bad every year, but you're going to get slammed pretty good in the next little while on this one project on my road there that's going to cost you significant dollars. Like they have, we're at four road crossings, now they're down to three, thanks to Chuck. But yeah, there's some serious money going to be spent on drainage.
Okay, any other?
Are we not worried about winter maintenance depleting its reserve? Like, should we not put something in there? That makes me very nervous.
Through the warden, with 24, we're still anticipating to be on budget for winter maintenance, and over the past couple budget cycles, we've increased the winter maintenance program. So we're monitoring that as we go to be in a situation where there, the reserve that has been depleted, that we're in a situation, that we would not need to utilize that reserve, and be in a situation where we'll gain those surpluses.
Keep it in the winter maintenance. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, we have a motion that council receives a 2023 financial results and year-end transfer report, and the Perth County Council approves effective December 31, 2023, the following reserve transfers. Number one, 4,360 transferred from the levy stabilization reserve, and number two, 52,113 transferred from the paramedic services WSIV reserve. Moved by Counsel Kastenberg, seconded by Counsel McDermott. All in favor? Thanks Cory.
Thank you.
We move to paramedic services, and the first one is a program development update report, and I believe we have Chris with us this morning. Welcome, Chris, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, Warden. Through the warden to council, how are you today? Just, so this is my program development update, let you know what our program development division's up to, or at least some of the key initiatives, you have the report, so you can read that. One of the things we're preparing for this year is our ambulance service review. This is led by the Ministry of Health Ambulance Service Branch, and they come and make sure that we can carry our certificate to be licensed to provide ambulance service. Happens every three years, the last one was virtually due to COVID, so this year is a far more robust process where they're going to come back in and we're going to have a chance to sit. So we're well on our way to being prepared for that, we started early, and I'm probably about 25% complete at this point, with another 50% sort of sitting there ready for review. So that's a very good process. The other thing that my division's working on is mobile integrated health quality assurance. So mobile integrated health has expanded rapidly over the last few years, lots of components and working parts in how to serve our community, working with some of the other departments here and county staff, who develop some surveys to get some feedback from our clients and see where our efficiencies can be had, and what our key things are to benefit the, the community and where we can really focus in and, and help with providing community care. Mental health training for paramedics, I noticed somebody mentioned WSIV, so we're all quite aware of the mental health strains on our service and our profession. One of the things that I've been working on is putting together a robust five-year plan and reaching out to some of our different providers that are doing research in this area to see what the best key things that we can focus in on and develop a plan that will cover off different categories of years of service is what we're looking at. Now, what do we do for very young individuals, what do we do for the individuals, and what do we do for those who are now approaching retirement so that we can help support their wellness? And then lastly, we've been doing a lot of onboarding of new personnel, that's been going on for about three years now. With restructuring in 2023, I did hire my new education commander, Kelly's not here today, but Kelly Hanson's our new commander of education, which is really exciting, so helping mentor her, bring her up into the education world to provide all this education to our staff is wonderful, and by fall, we're hoping to get our field training paramedic program back together, and then we'll have our full complement of education staff. So with that, I'll invite you to read the rest of the report and ask any questions you have.
Okay, questions, Counsel Kastenberg?
Yes, thank you, War Nagitz. Just curiosity, of course, how many hours of staff time do you figure are put into preparing and participating in the Ministry of Health Service Review?
Wow, that is a very good question. There's 256 line items that we have to provide proof for, documentation that we follow up. That is a really hard estimate, I can tell you as of now, we've spent at least three days in preparation and divvying up those folders of where we can find our evidence, and then it's an ongoing process for three years. My goal in program development is to actually make this more of a seamless process, use our file structures so that as we're saving things, this would be my long-term goal, is that we don't have to do any work to prepare for the ASR, it's just there. And ASR is ambulance service review, just, sorry, we love acronyms. But it would be a very hard estimate to let you know what goes into it. A lot of my time does, you know, I'll spend probably three or four days just reviewing the files once they're all submitted to make sure that we have everything to cover off where our needs are. But yeah, that would be something I could track for you, though. I wish I could tell you a lot.
A lot. If I might, War Nagitz, we hear a lot about red tape, and so I appreciate the fact that that your team is doing this work despite the fact that you have other usual duties to attend to, and that you're moving towards a sort of progressive approach that keeps it constantly fresh and does the work once as opposed to twice. I think that's what I heard you say.
Through the warden, that's exactly, and I've been fortunate to be on that review panel for a number of years, so slowly over the years, we've been able to move to a better system where we have electronic files and the ability to actually, I've actually been able to train each one of our management team on what we need in those files, which is also quite helpful. Then it just ends up there, and then it just becomes me reviewing them.
Okay, Counsel Trunkowski?
Thanks, Warden, through you. So Chris, when the ministry completes their review, not only for Perth County, but the other ambulance services through the province, is the province, is there objective, the better performing services, are they rewarded with better improvements or opportunities towards the funding, or is there, is there a link established by the province in that respect or not at present time?
Through the, through the warden, the ambulance service review is to maintain your certificate to operate the ambulance service, and I don't believe it's tied to any funding formula. The funding formula is a fixed rate that we submit for, and they give us whether it's 50/50 or 60/40.
So it's strictly a compliance review?
Strictly compliance, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And this year, it's more heavily focused on the administrative side to make sure that we're doing what we need to be saying we're doing according to the regulations and the different things that govern our profession.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Aitchison?
Maybe you shouldn't ask this question, but I'm going to. You mentioned you're doing mental health training for staff, great idea. They see and do things that I would never want to be near in my lifetime. But having said that, my push has been on mental health for a while, as you're fully well aware, and we did have a potential to roll out a program. Are we any closer? I know not everybody wanted to play in the sandbox there for a while, but I think they've at least gotten in the sandbox, I don't know if they brought their toadies with them yet or not. Like, are we close to rolling that out? Because it is so needed, it is unbelievable.
Through the warden, to council, you're speaking to the mental health, mobile mental health response area, so I can't speak to that one, that one would be a question for the chief.
I just like talked to the chief here a little while ago, and I hate bugging him, but at least I know everybody's playing in the same sandbox now, but before there was resistance from groups that I'm like, you gotta be kidding me.
Okay.
Okay, I'll talk with Mike again, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion that council receives a program development update report for information, moved by Counsel Kastenberg, seconded by Counsel Aitchison. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and the public access defibrillation program update, Chris?
Good morning, members of council, thank you for not making me stand up, walk back over there and come back. This is the PAD program, so everybody's aware of the public access DPHI program, and it's the AED distributors that are throughout the county. So that program started in 2008, evolved over time, included more and more grants from the heart stroke, the grants dried up, so we've launched more of a program to regionalize, take care of things, make sure everything's in order as legislation and stuff moves forward. To date, we've replaced 23 units, taken the opportunity to upgrade our technology and do some training for facility staff. That has also helped us increase our complement of spare AEDs that we can use for our cardiac loan programs or for the loner programs for events that people can apply for through the county website, as well as provide us opportunities to identify other areas that need to have AEDs for certain events, such as the Fullerton Ball Diamond, when they have a ball tournament, we can put an AED there and make sure that the public has access to that life-saving technology. Currently, we are still moving forward with getting an inventory of all the AEDs that have been throughout the county and all the different municipalities. It's a collaborative effort between many people in this room, as well as many people from each of your organizations, so that's been going well, and we're revamping all the policies at this point and moving forward with the idea that we will get that program up and running, consistent, and able to provide safe, consistent services to the public. Is there any questions?
Questions, Counsel Smith?
Thanks, Chris. Were we, maybe I missed it, were we going to develop a map of the county where these are?
So that is one thing, there is a program map attached to the agenda for this one. Now, this was defaulted from the last meeting, so that might be where that map lives, and it'll tell you. Part of that is figuring out what is the best way to provide the accessible map to the public, and the one thing that hinges on that is that I have an inventory of all of our AEDs beforehand, and there's actually been some movement in, there's a couple of different apps that I have our IT department looking at to see if they're suitable for us. that I have our IT department looking at to see if they're suitable for us that allow us to actually provide that through a phone-based service for members of the public so that they can see them, and there's some approvals and different things we're researching. But yeah, we're definitely, one part of the project is working forward on making that map accessible to the public.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Aitchison?
That just made me think of something, something I should have been thinking. So it's a great program. But I've had the comment made to me three or four times in the last year. They knew where this piece of equipment was. It was in a facility that was locked. And this would be after hours on a ball diamond or soccer field, whatever. Is there any way of trying to solve that issue? I know in one case, the volunteer department just happened to show up at the game and got in and got the thing out. But like that, it's great to have them, but you also got to be able to access them.
Yeah, improving, sorry, through the warden. Improving accessibility will be one key of the program as we move forward with the introduction of digital systems that allow for entry and things like that. We do have options to be able to provide sort of 911 access codes and provide them through the dispatcher registry. But that's something that each facility has to come on board with, and then we may have to move locations and provide sort of safety nets so that we can protect the security of our facilities at the same time. So yes, there is different options that we're looking at, and I'm also open to any suggestions that come up from you or your staff on how to improve the accessibility. There is also outdoor cases. There's one in Perth Seb's, an outdoor case. They're very costly because they have to be temperature and humidity controlled to protect the device itself. But there is different options to look at the, improving the accessibility and understanding of them.
Councilor Trenkowski?
Thanks, Warden, through you. Chris, can you remind council the cost of like one, a new unit? What's the typical cost to purchase one new unit?
Through the warden, I would say roughly for everything and all the accessories, if you say about $2,500, that would be about the cost of a new unit. We have a really good arrangement with the vendor, so we do get some different sort of benefits in that relationship, and we can also trade in our older devices for, to take a little bit off of that cost. I think the last 23 were somewhere in the area of $2,200. But we did purchase a larger number of them, and we did trade in a significant amount of the ones we're collecting.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Other questions or comments? Excuse me. If not, we have a motion that Perth County Council receives a public access defibrillation program update report for information. Second by Councilor Smith, second by Councilor Hor. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we're moving to the public works. We have the tender results update for Punky Doodle Corners Intersection Improvement. John, you feel with this? Well, good morning, gentlemen, welcome. Where's yours?
Thank you, Warden Eggers. Good morning, council. Through you, Warden. This report from Public Works is to provide council with update on the Punky Doodles Corner Intersection Improvement Project, which is included in the 2024 capital program. Over the last few months, the project team led by Oxford County has completed the detailed design and construction tendering phase of the project. A construction tender was issued by Oxford County, which resulted in eight bid submissions being received before bid closing. The tender results are cabled within the report. The submission received by Capital Paving represents the low bid submissions of the tenders received. They were reviewed by the project team and the consultant, where it was found that the bid is compliant with the bid documents and the contractor is experienced in construction of similar scope projects. This project, as council is aware, is subject to a three-way cost-sharing agreement between the parties sharing jurisdictional ownership over road assets in the area. The tender value submitted by Capital Paving is $1,082,349. That is found to be within budget. A portion of the tendered work includes work that is related to capital project RS 008, which is the rehabilitation of Road 101 from Tavistock through the curve, on the curved portion of the road. Those costs have been pulled out from the three-way cost share because they're specific to Oxford and Perth that are related to the other capital project. So through the tender breakdown that's provided by Oxford County, it shows that the expenses related to the intersection improvements, which are subject to the cost-sharing agreement, equate to $829,725. And then we add additional project contingencies and overhead to that, to about $200,000. So when that's split down to three-way cost share, it equates to $343,240. That is within the budget approved for our portion of that work at the intersection. And in addition to that, the expenses related to the project of resurfacing of 101 and Oxfordville 24, those expenses are also within budget for that project. So this tender results were delivered to Oxford County Council at their June 26 meeting, and Oxford County subsequently awarded the tender to capital construction for the amount tendered. And construction is anticipated to begin within this month, following completion of the work that is currently underway under the separate project from Tavistock up to the limits of this project. That should be completed in the next couple of weeks. Following that, Capital will move in and start work on this project. We have a preliminary schedule from them, which indicates completion about the second week of October. The project itself will require full road closures during certain stages of that construction. Traffic will be managed through established detour routes around the construction zone. That summarizes the report, and we would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions of the report or comments? Councilor Trenkowski?
Thanks, Warden, through you. Thanks for the further report, John and Bill. It's been a long time coming to get to this stage, so I appreciate staff's participation getting us to this point. So my comment is, you mentioned, Bill, about at some different occasions, there needs to be full closures to public traffic. So I guess my concern and my insistence would be to remind everybody involved, County of Oxford, the contractors and so forth, that compliance with the traffic control plan and worker protection plans as per the Occupational Health and Safety Act and the construction regulation requirements. I know they're competent contractors, they're aware, but just have to remind everybody every day about that safety with public traffic going in and out at various times. We already know it's a dangerous area to be in without construction traffic. So adding the construction activity heightens the risk. So just wanted to reemphasize how important that is to everybody's safety and well-being, which I know you're fully aware of, but you can never emphasize it enough. That's what I'm trying to say, so thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Warden Eggers. And maybe further to Councilor Trenkowski's comments there. Yeah, I think all municipalities involved in this project understand that doing a road closure and detour can be complicated in this area. So that was actually part of the detailed design work, and a preferred detour route was discussed by all municipalities and presented in the tender itself. That being said, traffic control plans still need to be done by the contractor, and yes, we need to follow all the regulations in Book VII. So that is being done, and yes, we've had some significant discussions on how that can be effectively done over the course of this project.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No, then we have a motion that council receives a tender results update Punky Doodles Corners Intersection Improvements Report. Moved by Councilor Trenkowski, second by Councilor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, gentlemen. You have some, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Just given that we're on a summer schedule here with only one council meeting per month, just like to verbally update council with a couple of construction schedules. Just to reiterate what Bill went through there in presenting, this report was just for the intersection improvements at Punky Doodles Corner. And again, Capital Paving has indicated that they look to start that work later this month. This project is separate from a road rehabilitation project that is currently ongoing. So Colden Place Recycling Operations began last week on Perth Road 101 or Oxford 24, and that's expected to be completed either tomorrow or early next week. Rotamill is performing those Colden Place operations on Perth Road 101, and then Branco will be providing paving with the hot mix afterwards. We are hopeful that Rotamill would then be moving to our Perth Line 44 project for road recycling operations in July. But again, we're just waiting on confirmation from the general contractor on that project, who is Branco Paving. Unfortunately, the month of June did bring some unfavorable weather, which sort of affected some contractor's schedules. This is true for resurfacing work on Perth Line 86 between Listowel and Perth Road 131. GIP Paving had previously scheduled that work to begin next week, but now has pushed their start date to August 6, just after the long weekend. And if council has any questions or comments regarding road construction or bridge construction, we'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, John. Any comments or questions? Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're going to move to council reports. And you have my activity report for the meetings and the events that I attended for the month of June, another very busy month. Any questions on any of that, where I was and what I did? If not, we have a motion that council receives the Warden's Activity Report, June 2024 Report for Information. Moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Councilor McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're moving to bylaws. And the first bylaw is to do with OPA 229, and it's bylaw 3991-2024, to be read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed this fourth day of July 2024. Moved by Councilor Aitchison, second by Councilor McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Any announcements? No, we do have a need for a closed session, so we do have a motion that council move into closed session at approximately 10:23 a.m. Excuse me, in accordance with Section 239 of the Municipal Act, Act S.0.2001(c)(25), to consider a matter pertaining to labor relations HR. And we need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Councilor McDermott, second by Councilor Aitchison. All those in favor? Carried. For everyone else, thank you for your participation this morning. Great to see you. And we're going to have a sort of... Okay, we have bylaw 3992-2024 being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting held July 4, 2024, is read a first, second, third time, and finally passed this fourth day of July 2024. Moved by Councilor McDermott, second by Hor. All in favor? Carried. And the last motion of the morning is that the council meeting be adjourned at approximately 11:47 a.m. By Councilor McDermott, second by Councilor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your day.